February 15, 2022, meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. As usual, I will open the meeting by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield should be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. I don't have any announcements this evening. Ed, you said you didn't have any, or did you?
No, I'm also.
I have none, Madam Chair, thank you.
Marlene?
I just have one thing I'd like to add. The town was notified today by Pioneer Valley Planning Commission that the town has been awarded $20,000 for a district local technical assistance grant to update the town's open space and recreation plan. I'm very pleased to hear that.
Great.
So, planning agencies, you know, receive state funds to work with communities on a number of projects, and our application was submitted for assistance with updating the open space plan.
Excellent.
Great. Thanks for your efforts on that.
Very good. I noticed I kind of went out of order here, so we skipped over public forum. I'm assuming, Bobby, you're here for public forum?
I'm with Garrett.
Oh, you're with Garrett. Is anyone else here for public forum? Did you want to come up to the microphone, Mrs. Berry?
Have a seat here?
Yes, have a seat.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
I'm here for the public forum. My name is Susan Berry, and I would like to speak about an issue, and it's not about spending the $500,000 or whatever the item is going to be for fixing the bridge on Prospect Court. I'm not here about that, but I am here about the issue of supporting, in part, the local businesses starting up, promoting a project of repair and recreation, a project that has minimal use. Why wouldn't you support the existing businesses and their plight for many years? Why go out of your way spending a lot of money and promoting a startup business when there are two businesses that are going to be hurt with the Ras Suge Pump Station? They've been, we've been supporting the community, pardon me. My blood pressure was 234 over 121, so pardon me. I'm trying to...
That's high.
You know?
Yeah.
Take your time.
Yeah, take your time.
It's a very emotional thing. Okay. So, as I was saying, why go out of your way spending a lot of money and promoting a startup business when there are two businesses that have been serving the community? One for 69 years and the other for over 36 years and are located between the two West Hatfield Historic District signs. It's my understanding that you named one of the fields, playing fields, under Judy, for Judy Strong. I'm trying to save and keep intact her father's restaurant that was started in 1953. It's seen many children go through college, many kids working there. It hosted a lot of the playing games, soccer games. They would end up eating there, having ice cream, and having a good time. I try not to get into the business of how they operate. I know that's changed quite a bit, the restaurant has, but I'm still trying to keep the restaurant and the property intact. Our businesses don't need disruption of any kind to impact our business by losing patrons and losing money. We're located in the West Hatfield Historic District. Here's the parking lot. I need every inch of space that I can offer any of my tenants. You can see, you know, like I say, I don't get into how they run it or what time they run it. It's their restaurant. I try not to, I support them. The situation of the raw pumps sewage station location, thank you. This, by the way, is my neighbor, and he's the other property that's being affected, him and his brother.
Susan, this is all already gone to town meeting and everything.
This is for him. I can get to speak.
You can get to speak. There are time limits on it.
Well, if I pass out, there's going to be a big time on it, so just let me get through it.
Well, we don't want you to pass out.
The situation of the raw sewage pump station location is identical to Gore Ave. You know Gore Ave? You remember Gore Ave? The town wanted to put a raw sewage pump station right in a guy's lawn. That proposed station was moved to a more suitable location for all. It was a win-win situation. The proposed location of the raw sewage pump station could be located onto the town land 500 feet north of 32, 34, and 36 West Street and out of the wetlands. My neighbors and I had a meeting a year ago, January 20th, with Mr. Phil Genovese, your director. He said he could put it anywhere he wanted, and he didn't care where the station went. I appeal to you...
Ms. Berry?
To think outside the box and make it a win-win situation by moving the station onto your own land.
Mrs. Berry, we're, I'm gonna, we've given you adequate time. All of these matters have been addressed multiple times, so I do appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Is that gentleman here for...
Did you want to speak?
Yes, the owner of 32 West Street. See, the pump station plans have been changed three times already, and the second time, they had bolsters in our driveway, and they were supposed to change the plans and get back to us, but they've never got back to us. My brothers called Scott and Alex. They never returned calls, so.
I thought that those were addressed, Marlene.
I will follow up with the engineer.
We'll follow up with the engineers.
Well, the engineer, if I may, I believe the engineers are working with the various attorneys, right?
Yeah, I mean, this is, just so townspeople understand, this is all pending litigation. This is nothing we can discuss tonight. So, we can't discuss pending litigation. So, this is all pending litigation. The engineers are aware of it. We know that they're working on this.
The public forum portion is for people to give up, to make a comment on something, but there's no back and forth with, on any topic with the Select Board. It's public forum, the opportunity.
Right, so, Marlene will follow up with the engineers.
Did they ever come to a conclusion on the gas leak, too?
No, that has...
That's all pending as well.
Yes, and there will be another meeting in the spring.
Will be another meeting in the spring.
In the spring.
Which is what we had told the residents and businesses in the area, that they'd be made aware of it.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a couple sets of minutes to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the Select Board meeting minutes from February 1st and a Select Board meeting minutes from February 8, 2022.
A second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we'll move into the posted business. Topic one is a DPW report. Garrett, did you want to maybe come to, and Bobby, come to, is that mic live, John?
Yep.
Okay. Welcome.
I'm here just to welcome Bobby Betsold for a presentation on pavement preservation, just to let townspeople know kind of how our Chapter 90 funding works, what different types of, without getting into depth, of different types of blacktops versus for the Chapter 90 funding of how we're going to do roads and kind of just a brief explanation on how things are done.
And just, Chapter 90 funding is how, the funding that you use that comes from the state that is specifically for repairing roads?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, John, I just want to make sure, I'm going to share the screen here.
Will we be able to see it?
Should.
Oh, okay.
Want to make sure that all comes through.
I'm good, thanks.
Okay, is that coming up for everyone's screen as well as for you, John?
Yep.
Perfect. Let me just, let me just get this out of the way. Okay. For some reason, that doesn't want to let me.
You're all right.
Okay, so, I was commenting before, this is, I think, the first time I've been at a Select Board meeting, not as a resident of the town or not as a town committee member, so it's kind of a little different. But, so here today, as Garrett mentioned, just to talk a little bit about the roads and Chapter 90 and kind of what, we've been working with Garrett together on a kind of a program for going forward. In addition to my role with Allstate's Materials Group, I also teach classes for Bay State Roads, which is the local technical assistance program at UMass. Hatfield actually hosted a course a couple of years ago that Garrett took part in, and that started a lot of the conversation and some of the changes that have been made the last couple of years of the program and trying to develop it going forward. So, today is kind of an abbreviated version of what I'll call a six-hour class crammed into about 10 minutes that just takes a high-level approach, both for you as elected officials but also for the residents, to kind of see, you know, what are the different types of things that are being done to help stretch the budget dollars and that side of things. So, just briefly, we'll get in, we'll talk about the roads, we'll get into some of the treatments and strategies, and then get into a little bit more of the financing and where that goes with things. One of the big things that's really happened to change in the last five to 10 years, and is a good change, is looking at the town's roads, and this is for every town, as an asset, because that's what they are. They have a life to them and treating them as an asset. In the case of a lot of municipalities across New England, it is typically the largest financial asset that a community will have. So, when you start looking at it in that regard, it can sometimes kind of change the mindset a little bit and how you need to approach it and look at things. It's also important to, you know, you kind of get a secondary thought. We sometimes take for granted our roads in terms of what they do. It's how everything functions, how we get to work, how we get to school, emergency services, and when we think about when there's a snowstorm, when there's trees down or anything like that, how it alters everything. So, again, kind of, you know, it's a central role, but a lot of times, it kind of falls back into a secondary role and a secondary funding. So, really trying to take that and look at it in terms of the program and what the town is doing and how you can optimize your spend and get the most bang for the buck. So, with that, we took a quick calculation and looked at Hatfield's roads and taking it just from a general mileage, so we have approximately 30 miles of paved road in town and an additional 10 miles of gravel road that the town currently maintains. When you look at average costs for materials and you factor those out across the area that we have, the asset value of Hatfield's road network is just shy of $12 million, and that's just from a materials-in-place. So, we're not talking about utilities, we're not talking about signage, guardrails, striping, anything, just the materials that are there, and you can see the breakdown a little bit further. The other one at the bottom there to keep in mind is if we think about an average life from an asset perspective, that, you know, the typical road, when you build it, it will have a life of approximately 20 years. So, using a depreciation factor, that means annually, the town's road network loses approximately $600,000 in value each year, and that kind of becomes a baseline for what we'll talk about at the very end of this. This is, again, just kind of the summary of those numbers and taking it out of that little bit busy of a spreadsheet and really giving a summary, high-level view of that, and again, keeping in mind that this is just purely the materials, so just the gravels and the blacktop that's down there. So, I always like to take it back, you know, when we talk about roads, we'll take it back to something we all see and know. So, here, Hatfield farming community, if we think about barns being built, you know, and, you know, 100 years ago, 200 years ago, and you can maintain it or you can, you know, kind of not maintain it, and where does it end up? So, we've got on the left a barn that probably is not salvageable in terms of maintenance and really be have to be taken down and rebuilt, or one that's been maintained, rehabbed, and that is one of our museums here in town. Your roads are no different, and again, thinking about it in terms of an asset and how you want to preserve and maintain them. So, there's a lot of times this thought of, we need to go out and work on the worst road, and unfortunately, for many reasons, that's actually counter to what the most productive and most financially fiscal thing to do is. You certainly need to address those, but you also want to be maintaining your good roads. Unfortunately, with today's financial situation that all communities are facing, whether it be here in Massachusetts, across New England, or across the country, the financial picture just isn't there for doing a quote-unquote "worse-first" approach, and that's where the preservation concept comes in. So, when we look at the life of a pavement, and the year can be what it is, but ultimately, what we're looking at is this concept of spending $1 up above on preventative maintenance to eliminate or delay $8 to $10 of spend if you let that road deteriorate and get down to the bottom or you have to rehab it and rebuild it. There's a lot of tools in the toolbox, as Garrett said, and this one slide summarizes about an hour and a half presentation. We don't want to get into the weeds on it, but this just walks through a lot of the different treatments that are out there and kind of think of tools in the toolbox that could be potentially used, and in the majority of the cases, it's a blend of these tools, you know, and it could be two or three, four or five, depending on the community. Garrett did ask me today to specifically talk about one treatment that Hatfield has started to use, did a pilot project on, and is in the plans going forward, which is the asphalt rubber chip seal. So, chip seals at a generic level are actually the most widely-used pavement preservation treatment in the country. Specifically here in New England, the asphalt rubber chip seal is the most widely-used variation of that chip seal or of that process across the region. Essentially, what this is, is a hot-applied chrome rubber modified asphalt that is sprayed out on the road, that first picture there that you see on the top. It's then covered with a heated and treated aggregate similar to what would come out of a blacktop plant that's spread on the road. That's rolled and then swept. You can have additional sweepings later on down the road if necessary, depending on any excess gravel or any excess stone that may be left. This, in preserving the road, it seals and waterproofs that surface, and it gives you a new durable and highly-crack-resistant wearing surface that, for New England, is really built for it. Our roads move, we all know that. Here we are in, you know, in frost heat season, and cracks are showing up and that, and this really helps with that. It also has the nice benefit from a, from a green and recycling side, is that approximately 1,500 recycled tires are used in every mile of roadway that's treated with this. So, it does bring that nice sustainability into it as well. So, this is what was actually applied on three roads a couple of years ago in a pilot project and what Garrett has programmed in for additional roadways going forward.
Can you just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but which three roads?
So, it was Gore Ave, Plantation, actually, well, Winterberry, I'm sorry, I lumped that in, and then...
Lindsay Hill.
Lindsay Hill, yes, thank you. So, four roads, again, I forgot about, I forgot about Winterberry. I should have remembered, it was on my paper route. So, we also wanted to point out, we mentioned in terms of the usage out there, this shows, you know, just from a Massachusetts and kind of surrounding, this treatment in the last five years in terms of the municipality, so it's been applied in over 200 municipalities across the region as well as with all the state DOTs, so it's nothing new. It's something that is very widely-used and used in communities across the whole region. So, jumping ahead in terms of more now into the kind of the strategy and that side of things, and again, kind of giving a high-level view, the concept we're really trying to get to is the maintenance and the preservation. We're trying to keep our good roads in good shape and not let them fall off to the point where, one, we don't want to be driving on them because they're not in good shape, but also because the repairs are more expensive, and that's really the concept of what's trying to be done here and being adaptive. With that, what you actually do is, in the red line there is kind of that typical, we pave it, we set it and forget it, we'll come back to it when it's pretty much broken up and there's no life left to it, versus the preservation concept, which is the green curve there. So, every five to seven years roughly, you do a quicker, more of a preservation, kind of think about your deck, you know, if you have a wood deck and you want to go out and seal it every three to five years versus leaving it for 20 years and then having to redeck it. Several things happen with this. One, you end up having a much lower cost of maintenance and cost over the time, but also, you have something that's in good shape the whole time, as opposed to with that red line you see, you're going to spend more than half the life in pretty rough shape. A couple of quick examples, you know, because it's always good to, you know, it's one thing to have theory but to actually have places that it's been done. So, this first one, this community here from Massachusetts, you can see the 10-year period from 2011 to 2020 and their network condition, that PCI pavement condition, and that's really the big thing. So, they started out at a 74, so call it a C. At that point in time, they were working on roughly seven and a half miles of roadway each year, of which a little over half was preservation. They made a big shift, and you can see that where now they're working on double the amount of roads, working with a lot more preservation, so they've cut back that repair and that rehab, still doing a little bit. And what's happened with the same budget over that time period, they've drastically improved the condition of their network, which is obviously the goal of what we want. We want to have roads that are in better shape, easier to maintain, easier to plow, and all of that. Another example, also out of Massachusetts, same thing, working at a level funded, 10 years, they made the shift to preservation, and over that time period, you can see how, instead of having roughly a third or 40% of their roads in reconstruction or rehabilitation, they've now got it down to, it's approximately 15%, and they're really, you know, you look at that bottom there, the do-nothing at 50, over 50%, those are roads that they don't need to touch because they're in great shape, and it's that shift that they've made over time. This community, and Garrett may not like to hear this, this community actually has gotten to the point where they've actually reduced their budget for maintaining their roads because they've gotten to that point in time. So, that's great, what does this all mean, and we'll kind of wrap this into the final for Hatfield, because that's, you know, this is all great with theory and concepts, but... So, taking that asset approach, and if we look at, you know, the road network, essentially what needs to happen is for a town, if you have your condition of your overall network, you need to do some type of work that gains you life to make up for the deterioration, the depreciation that's happening. So, with Hatfield's 30 miles of roadway, every year, that network ages, every mile gets a year older. So, you need to come up with some life extension with the treatments that you do to put 30 years of life back in every year. That way, you're just staying where you are. If you want to gain ground, you obviously need to do more. If you don't get there, then you do less. So, we took kind of some typical treatment options that are used, and this is really kind of the baseline of the five treatment options that would be used here in Hatfield and have been used here, and the cost that those get you, air that they take, and then what they get you for a life extension, keeping in mind that the town of Hatfield has roughly $240,000 of Chapter 90 money every year, and that's the only money that goes towards road projects unless we get into capital, but in a typical year, roughly $240,000 is put towards the roads. So, with that, if all we did is just reconstruction, just the reclaim and repave, we can do approximately one mile of roadway, and you can see there in that 15 years gained, we've essentially lost that much ground, you know, the town has gone backwards by 15 years of total life by only doing that one treatment and spending the entire budget on that. So, obviously not the optimum in terms of the overall condition. As you start to slowly shift the treatments and you look at getting into, not quite to a preservation but more into a rehab and repair, where you do a combination of some mill and fill, where we grind out a thickness and then put back, or overlay, you can start to work on more roads, you can start to get a little more ground, still keeping with that same budget. So, you're getting closer to your goal, but still not there, and this is a typical trend, again, in today's day and age, unfortunately, for communities, that the funds just aren't there. So, to get to that 30, that target that we're trying to get to to maintain our current network, this is a blend that starts to use more tools in the toolbox, where you're getting into, you know, still doing some of that work, that deeper work that you have to do on a mill and fills, still doing some of your overlays, but blending in more of your preservation treatments with the chip seal that Garrett's starting to use and starting to program into and doing more of crack seal. You start to get that blend, you'll notice a couple of things have happened. One, instead of working on a mile of road, you've worked on five and a half miles of road, so now we're addressing a lot larger portion of the town in terms of keeping those roads good, and you're getting the life extension to keep the network where it is, all within the same budget. So, I'm going to throw one more out there and not to kind of blitz anybody, but looking at if you wanted to move forward, if you wanted to gain ground and improve that network, options that could come in. So, this shows what an increase of a budget of $100,000 extra added in, and you can see how much that jumps, where now, instead of working on the five and a half that you were on at the current budget, you're jumping to over eight miles and you're gaining life. You're actually gaining essentially 50% life every year to build that network condition back up. Just kind of a situational forecast out there of what that could mean from the overall. The summary of all of that kind of comes back to here. So, you look at the three different strategies that are out there, the miles that are treated with it, all working with roughly the same budget, and then the years that are gained, and that cost comparison, that annual cost comparison that you get, keeping in mind at the very beginning that we talked about as an asset and a depreciation, the town's roads depreciate by just under $600,000 a year. So, you're currently actually functioning and can get to where you can maintain the roads with preservation at half of the depreciation or less than half of the depreciation value of an asset that's out there. So, kind of the quick summaries, and again, I cram a lot into that and certainly happy to take any questions or add anything else in, but thinking about the asset, the town's roads as an asset and the value and where that goes and how that impacts everything going forward, looking at the reasoning and the background and the importance of using preservation to keep the network from going backwards. And I'll add one in there, our neighbors just to the north in Whately, it was an interesting thing, last year, I was talking with Keith there, Keith Byer, their highway superintendent, they filled no potholes last year in the town of Whately, and Whately has been doing chip seals and other preservation treatments for several decades now, and he said, he goes, "It's great to not have to worry about sending the crew out to patch potholes, to fill things, and it's just this ongoing program that they have and that they've had in place." And I know Garrett and Keith talk a lot and that and stuff, and that's had certainly an impact on trying to build it going forward. It's just, again, trying to use that, the cost and use the dollars the most effective way possible to maintain and, where possible, even gain ground. So, with that, I don't know if there's anything, Garrett, you want to add or anything additional? Happy to take any questions or address any thoughts or otherwise.
So, first off, thanks for the information, Bobby. So, one of the takeaways that I took away from the presentation was over 200 communities, you said, were already using this type of technology. So, I take it, especially in New England, that snow, salt, sand, none of those things...
Frost.
Frost, you know, doesn't, doesn't complicate matters with this type of paving versus the smooth, you know, I mean, when you think of it, you think, okay, it's all kind of chipped. I know there's a process on top of that, but, you know, I'm just thinking of a plow going down the street and there's little something hanging up and you grab it and then create, pulls it, creates an issue.
Yeah, so, certainly, absolutely, you know, we're in New England, that's one of the first questions that comes up every, anytime you go into a new community with it, and by all means, you know, very valid.
And I thought I was original.
He thought you were original, too.
In terms of... In terms of the treatment and issues with the treatment, no concerns at all. And, and I'm not sure who plowed that route the first time. From a plowing perspective, the person out there the first time, they're going to notice it in that they're going to get some extra resistance when they're plowing. I will say, chip seals in general, they look their worst the first day they're out there. So chip seals love traffic. And the reason they love traffic is when you spray the liquid that, that goes out first before the chips are dropped on it, you're getting roughly a 60 to 70% embedment of that chip into the liquid layer. As traffic drives on it, it continues to knead and embed it and, and fit those chips together. So over time, they continue to actually smooth out, to the point where typically when you come back the second year, so one year later, you can't even tell the difference between that and a typical hot mix. And it's because that traffic has continued to knead them together. And they also, with the asphalt rubber product, because of actually ironically, a good thing from the rubber, is that they self-heal. So as the temperatures heat up, they start to, to essentially move back together and, and will fill cracks and, and will kind of rebond. So they move and they flex with the roadway in that regard. So to the treatment itself, plow's not an issue, salt not an issue, sand, any of that. The plow drivers, like I said, will notice it the first time out there that they're going to go, wait a minute, this is, this is grabbing a little bit extra. And it actually, in some places, is used also, from a safety perspective, actually, because it gives you a little bit of higher skid resistance. So in wet weather conditions and icy conditions, you get a little bit extra friction. So some places will actually use it on their hills or on their turns and, and that's for that reason.
So that answered one of my questions. This product is on the state bid?
Yes.
I, I just have one question going back a couple of screens where you were saying you'd add $100,000 for the maintenance, because Chapter, or Chapter 90 is what, around 250 or so, is that right?
240.
So you're talking like 350. Now, would that be 100 grand each year forever, or how does that?
You could do it, you, you could do it however the town wanted. This was just the scenario to kind of say what could be done. So if we think again, going back to, and I jump back to the slide that, that has the, you know, the current budget and getting to the 30-year mark, that's to maintain the current overall level that you're at. So if you say, hey, we're, we're happy with our overall condition with where we're at as, as a full network, we're good as long as we maintain that, we can blend this in, we can keep where we're at. If you say, we want to improve our network, how can we do that? That's where then if you start saying, well, what if we add 50,000? What if we add 100,000? What's that impact going to be in terms of added life? Over time, as you improve your overall condition, it gets easier to maintain. So as I mentioned with, with one of those example towns, they were actually, over time, to end up ultimately be able to reduce their budget. Because if you think back to the slide at the beginning where it's a whole lot cheaper to maintain those roads in good shape versus the ones that are in poor shape.
I mean, it's, if you maintain stuff, it's cheaper in the long run. But it's always financing how, where to get the money, the additional money, or how to figure out how to get the additional money. The presentation makes sense. I, I love it. I think it's a great, great option, and it works very well. But it's, for us, it'd be a discussion on if we continued it, how much more funding can, or where we get it from. So that, that'd be like the main issue. That's what, I guess, are you guys looking at using this program, Garrett, or how does that?
Yeah, we're, we're going to use the program as, as it's funded now, 242, something like that, right around in there. It changes, it's by population.
And so right now, we're funding 250 or so, which goes chip seal. So instead of 30-year gain, it's going to be, if we stayed at that level, it would be 40 or 50 years, right? Something like that?
If you, if you stayed where you are using the blend, yeah, you're roughly leveling, keeping even with the board with your current. If you, again, if you wanted to improve your condition, and this is where you can run scenarios. You can say, okay, what if we, what if we just do a one-year influx, say? Or what if you do a three-year? And, and this is where different communities handle it different ways. And, and there's really not a right answer. I've seen communities that have said, we're going to add to the budget by 10% or 20% every year, and we're going to leave that in there. So we're just going to make small incremental gains every year. I've also seen communities that have said, we're going to go out and do a five-year bond, and we're going to take care of all of our poor roads. So we're going to dedicate our maintenance, our, our Chapter 90 or our state funds is only going to be for maintaining and preserving. And those roads that are poor, that need a little bit more work, we're not going to take those out of our normal maintenance funds. We're going to do those as capital.
So you're, you're saying they, they're taking out a loan, they're taking their Chapter 90 money and putting it towards the loan so they can keep, catch up?
No, no, they're putting Chapter 90 towards maintenance.
Yes. So they're doing their maintenance, fully dedicated to, uh, Chapter 90 solely dedicated to maintenance, and they're treating those roads that are at the bottom that are more costly, those on a bond or as a capital, kind of taking that asset approach. So there's a lot of different ways that you can kind of slice it up. And, and again, it's, as things are available, as funds, some years you may not be able to, some years you are. You know, but it, it's, it's giving you an idea of a baseline of where are you at, you know, what's the reasoning for looking at some of these alternative treatments that, that haven't necessarily been widely used in town and, and why they're being done? Because at the reconstruction only or as a rehab and repair, you're losing ground unfortunately every year. So by blending in these, you can, you can maintain your level. And if you want to go forward, you can, you can gain ground with other options as well.
What you're saying right now is chip seal for small towns is probably the way to go, right? I mean...
The rubber chip seal, right?
Yeah, there's multiple options. I, that's become, over the last five years, the shift has happened from, you know, the emulsion-based chip seal, which is a conventional, to the rubber for, for several reasons. You're getting more performance, the same-day sweeping and that. So that's been the, a significant shift that's gone. So yeah, that's the, far and away the, the one that's been...
I guess just to, so, but are, not all roads would be a candidate for this, right? So like, I'm thinking Chestnut Street, right? So it's, it needs, to me, it seems like it needs more, it's not just the, the covering. So, so there's still the roads that need to go right down to the base, the milling and all of that.
Yep.
But other roads may be candidates.
Yeah. And that's where you look, you know, so even if I go back to, you know, the slide I have up here now again, is, is the current budget and using a blend, using a mix. And that's kind of like, you know, again, you think about tools in the toolbox. As much as we like to think we can fix everything with a hammer and duct tape, we can't. You know, so you mix in some, some different tools. So this is where you use that blend. You do address some of those. So, you know, absolutely, Dino, you said, you take a road like Chestnut Street, or you take like, you know, North Hatfield Road up by, by Hatfield Beach.
Oh, I travel it every day.
That's, that's in rough shape. You can't treat that with a preservation. That, that needs some more substantial work. But then...
But then you can.
What you want to do is, once you do that, don't set it and forget it for 20 years. Come back to it in five or six years. And it may look like, well, what's wrong with this? Well, you, you don't want to let it deteriorate. Do it while it's still inexpensive to maintain it and preserve it. So that's kind of that concept, is to get yourself into that, that preserve mode.
Very interesting. There's, I just want to say that there's a lot of science that goes into this. Bob has, I've visited Bob many times, many times now, up at All States. And, I mean, there's science labs and it's really, there's, there's a lot to this. It's really impressive, impressive operation. And, and I appreciate this, this presentation. And I know you have Garrett's ear. So...
Well, we certainly appreciate the time. And, and again, as I've told Garrett, and he's reached out a bunch, and I always, again, speaking with, with Keith and, and a lot of the surrounding towns and that and stuff. So, you know, anything we can do to help and that, or more than happy to, and answer any questions anytime it comes up.
Thanks. And the other thing I would say, so I'm going to have to take a little road trip tomorrow, or in the next day or two, down to Gore.
Yeah. I, I really don't, I don't go down there.
But if residents have questions or, or kind of want to see it in action, right?
Yeah.
You can take a little road trip, maybe I'll see you there, to check it out and have an idea of exactly, exactly what, what we're talking about.
And one that you may drive, even though it's not in town, but you may drive more is, is actually if you go on River Road in Whately, is, that is actually an asphalt rubber chip seal. So I know that's...
Right from the line?
Obviously, a lot of people going, a lot of people going over to Sundaland or going up to, you know, any of that area north, you may drive on that road.
From Hatfield Line on, so roughly?
Not right at the line. I think it starts at, Ronnie would know. What road does that start at, Ronnie?
It ends up by the Straits, Grammer's School.
Christian Lane.
Oh, Christian Lane, okay. I drive that road.
Yep.
Lane to the bridge, basically.
Oh, it is a nice road.
Yeah. I've never even noticed a difference.
That's two years old, or a year?
That's three years.
Three years?
Yeah, three years old.
And that's a heavily traveled road, much more heavily traveled than Gore or Lencito.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Yeah, Bob, thanks.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bobby. And Garrett, thank you. Very interesting.
Oh, um, okay.
Do we want to take up this PVPC here?
Is it a quick?
Well, don't we have?
Well, it is quick, but you could take it up later.
Just figured we've got...
Well, Garrett's here.
Yeah.
Oh, we need Garrett for that?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's finish up with the PVPC.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. So Garrett, this is, this other topic on the agenda is regarding the TIP, PVPC TIP program. You and I had a brief discussion last week, and I had a, a, sure a conversation with, with the select board chair. And, and she had thought it would be, you know, a good idea to add it to the agenda and have a discussion about it. So, you know, based on our conversation, or you confirmed, the town doesn't have any projects that are submitted to the TIP program currently. And I don't believe we have for...
Yeah, several years anyways, we haven't.
I don't, yeah, I haven't, I thought about some different ways and things, but I don't have anything.
And you would explain to me, though, in order to have a project on the TIP list, that you, you need to pretty much have funding available or in place?
A lot, it depends, because there's a lot of different, different project parts to it, I guess, without getting into depth to it, that you have to have funding prior to engineering costs. 30% has to be upfront before you start the projects.
Okay.
I guess it's something that really has to be watched closely.
Aren't they mostly mass DOT involved projects? So they're state roads, right?
Yes.
So I'm on the Franklin County TIP.
Right.
Yeah, I go to all of those. And it, it's really extensive, like...
That's what I mean, yes.
The, the meetings are incredibly detailed and...
The money's there. It's, I mean, you'd have to, it's more of a full-time, there's a lot into them.
It's like a, it's like a capital plan, but it's like on steroids, because it's, it's really complicated. And, you know, there's the design phases and all of, it's really something else to sit at those meetings, but...
And if we had something, I mean...
But we do have somebody who goes to the TIP meetings.
Yes.
So we don't have a project you think would qualify. So can I just change gears a little bit on that? Because I had a text from somebody asking why we didn't get any bridge money? Did other communities got some bridge money? Was, Marlene, we talked about it. We weren't really sure.
Small bridge grant?
Yeah, the small bridge.
There was just an announcement the end of last week, a small bridge grant.
I don't have the actual, the sizes of the bridges are like, is the, it can't be longer than 10 feet?
Yeah.
And I'm not 100%...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the criteria were. They just asked...
It has to be, you know, six feet or, you know, 12 feet wide. We don't have it.
Right. So I, I don't know.
We don't have bridges that qualify.
Qualify. And this, this specifics on the sizes of the bridges are...
Because it is all small towns, well, no, Greenfield's on there, Williamsburg, Greenfield, Deerfield, Whately, Hadley, Northfield. The announcement that was just made last week that the application is opening up is for small-town bridges.
This said they've read an article that they've got, those towns got funding for bridges. So I was just, I didn't know about it myself.
There is a new one that, that has come up that, I, I haven't read it yet.
Okay. So we just didn't have bridges that qualified for the program?
I thought that Chestnut Street, that Aggie's Bridge at Circle Drive, I thought that might, but it's too long. I don't think the bridge needs to be replaced, but...
Well, that's the other thing. Just because you have a bridge, doesn't mean it needs to be replaced.
Yeah, but if you could get it done, why wouldn't you?
Yeah, you could.
I, I agree, but, you know, it's probably on an as-need basis.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure it has to qualify.
Yeah, there's...
Okay. So I, we don't need to take action on this.
No, you do not. No.
But it's really, do we, do we have someone who regularly goes to the TIP meetings, even if we don't have a project on?
I've been to them and I read them, because I get the emails all the time. And I read, you know, which ones that I've been to the TIP meetings if, if it involves us.
Yeah.
Do I go all the time? No. But it doesn't mean that I won't go if there's something that's interesting.
I mean, you know, we, we, I don't want to waste anybody's time, but there is, you know, just enormous amounts of information. It's, it's really interesting to see how projects proceed.
There's a lot to them.
Oof, yeah. Yeah. It really is. Okay. That's all. I, I don't have anything. Did you have anything, Ed?
I'm good.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Garrett, thank you for everything. So I would suggest we maybe go a little bit out of order so that we could take up the host community agreement, since we have some folks here tonight. Hello, welcome.
Are they here for that?
They're there.
Did you want to come up to the microphones? It's going to be...
I have to bring a couple of chairs with you.
Maybe bring up another green chair. And someone can sit in the black chair, because that mic is live. Or you can all sit in green chairs. Well, the, the mic on the desk is live.
Oh, great, okay.
Yeah. So, welcome. Nice to see you. If, but if you could all just introduce yourself.
Absolutely. My name is Isaac Fleischer. I'm an attorney here on behalf of Hatfield Farms LLC, Hatfield Pharmacy LLC.
Jared Glansperger here on behalf of the landlord.
Bernie Smorowski, Smorowski Brothers LLC. And with us remotely is Rajiv Srinath, who is a potential lessee of one of our sites on our little campus that Isaac will describe for you.
Okay.
Rajiv is the principal of Hatfield Pharmacy LLC.
Okay, welcome.
Welcome, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. So if you could just explain, okay, just explain.
Yes, absolutely. So we're submitting this host community agreement for approval. It's for a adult-use marijuana cultivation establishment. It's going to be all outdoor grow. And it's located at what was formerly known as parcel 21134, but I'm told that as of today, it is now called 139 North Hatfield Road. So we now have a mailing address for the, for the site. They're going to, Hatfield Pharmacy is going to be one of potentially four different tenants on this parcel that will all be adult-use cultivators. Hatfield Pharmacy is the first one, and this HCA only applies to Hatfield Pharmacy. It, the, the site is in the rural residential district. It's, marijuana cultivation is allowed by special permit there. It satisfies all the setback requirements. And the HCA that we proposed is essentially just, we just tried to copy other HCAs that Hatfield has already approved, try to keep it consistent. So there shouldn't be any surprises there. It includes the, the standard 3% community impact fee and, you know, requirements that they, that they pay all local taxes and comply with all the zoning ordinance requirements.
So just, can you just describe where this is, Bernie? Is, is this like across from where Nellie's house was?
It's due south of there. It is, it, it borders North Hatfield Road on the west side and Straits Road on the east side. It's a 38-acre parcel owned by Jimmy and Laurie Motica. We have a purchase and sale on it.
So it's on the other side, so it's on the same side as, it, it, okay, so it's on the Straits Road side of North Hatfield Road, you're saying? Okay.
Yes.
Does that, I think there's access on both, from both roads?
Yes, access from both.
Access from both roads, yeah.
And what's the status of, with the planning board?
So we are actively submitting an application for special permit to the planning board. We've been before them informally in January.
Yeah.
In January, and they readily welcomed the proposal. For this property, the Conservation Commission was really kind of the key feasibility element that we wanted to ensure. So we approached the Conservation Commission first and have had our RDA, I never am sure what the language is, denied or a negative determination from the Conscom. And so now we're on the docket for Planning Board with Berkshire Design Group as our civil engineer. And so we'll be before... And so we'll be before them as soon as we can get on to the next agenda.
Don't we normally take these up after the planning board?
You don't have to, there is no requirement by statute to do that. They are just exercising their rights to, to gather all the information for submission of an application to the Cannabis Control Commission.
Right.
And, and I just wanted to add that Mr. Fleischer is, is correct. I've reviewed the host agreement, and it is pretty consistent with other agreements. However, I have forwarded to Town Council for review, and I had a cut, just two questions, but I have not heard back from him yet, so I certainly wanted to give the applicant, you know, I should say pharmacy, I love the name anyway.
Yeah, that is a great name.
An opportunity to meet with, with the Select Board and, and discuss, you know, their proposed operation. I, I don't anticipate any, you know, issues with this agreement.
From a contractual perspective.
From a contractual point of view, right. But I would, I would recommend to the board, certainly your decision, but I would recommend that pending Attorney Mullins' approval that.
Yeah, I mean, we have to do that.
Well, and I, I think just for, I think everybody in the room understands this, for the people on TV, because we've, we've been through this in the past with, with others that have come before us, that this step that the Board of Selectmen may take tonight is just one of many in the process of the, of Pharmacy Inc. moving forward and going to the Cannabis Control Commission to actually get the license. So the Planning Board's part of it, the Board of Selectmen are part of it, it, it's all of us together.
And I just also want to be clear that one step doesn't leverage the next step.
Correct.
So in other words, it's not as if, if this gets approved, that they would then say to the Planning Board, well, the Select Board's already approved it, so it's, they're all, they all have to happen independently.
There's many pieces to the puzzle, as you can all attest to. And I just wanted to make sure that for those on TV, watching on TV, they understood that that's what this is.
And even if this agreement was made, if there was any snafus with the Planning Board, then this is nullified because there's no moving forward with it without the special permit.
And also, I understand that this agreement's just for one part of that parcel, so if you have another lessee, they have to come in here and we have to do another host agreement.
So can we, just for the, just so that people understand the scale of this, you're talking, there's, the parcel is how many acres?
Roughly 38 acres.
38, so from North Hatfield Road to Straits Road? And this first use is how many acres?
The first parcel is.
This, this one?
It's approximately five acres.
Five acres.
Five to six acres there, yeah.
And it would be at the special permit time that all of the discussions would happen about fencing and.
And there, by state regulations, they, they, they're capped at a maximum of 100,000 square feet of what's called canopy, which is the measurement of the space where they're actually growing plants.
It's a highly regulated industry.
It certainly is.
That much I know for sure.
Right.
And another step in the process, I believe, is a community outreach event that you have too.
We've had those before.
That's correct.
I guess, you know, I, you know, we've, we've, we've tried to be as favorable to moving these along as possible, but I do think I would like the opinion from council just before we do it.
Sure.
So, I mean, we have the information now, townspeople have the information. I guess I would just like to maybe wait till we get that and then approve it at a future meeting? I mean, that's not going to hold you up, because there's still plenty of other things in the process, but I think just to be, to do it right, let's just wait and make sure we get that. That's, that would be my feeling. It doesn't hold you up, right?
It shouldn't.
Okay.
So, so we aren't taking any, we're going to wait till we hear back from?
Well, I don't know, I mean, it's up, it's the discussion for the board.
Well, I mean, I have no, I have no problem.
Do you want to do it before council gets back to us?
I mean, we, we have two choices, we can wait for council, or we can say we approve based on council approving. I mean, those are the two options, correct?
I'm good with option two, to be honest with you, but.
You are? Okay, that's fine then.
I'll make, so I will make a motion to approve Hatfield Pharmacy, that's with an F and not a P, H, Inc. Host community agreement for the citing of a recreational cultivation marijuana establishment in the town of Hatfield at 139 North Hatfield Road, dependent on towns, council reviewing the agreement. Does that hit it for you, Marlene?
Mm-hmm.
Hit it for you, Ed and Diana?
Okay, I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
No.
Just that we would revisit it if council had any alternate input? Okay. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, so, and not to speak for Marlene, but once, once our Town Council reviews this, they'll let Marlene know, who will let us know, but of course, we would correspond with you guys.
But if there's a need to, for whatever reason, backtrack, we, you know, we're, we're having a lot of meetings these days, so there, there shouldn't be much of a holdup.
Right.
Great. So does this close the public hearing for, unless the Town Council had additional questions?
This isn't a public hearing.
This is not a public hearing?
No.
It's a public meeting, but it wasn't, it wasn't advertised as a hearing.
It wasn't, why, was?
It'll be more about the other group, the other department, if there's going to be one.
There's a posted agenda.
There is, oh, absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's an agenda, and it's on here, but a public hearing is.
It's posted on the town's website.
With a subsequent, will there be a vote at another meeting to, to finalize the HCA? Or will someone just reject it?
Only if they need to, yeah.
If the Town Council recommends any changes to it, we would revisit it and revote it.
Right, and I'll let you know then.
And I would imagine our council will work with, with you, Isaac.
Perfect.
So it doesn't need to be a public hearing to, to approve a host agreement, right? We've done them, right, Marlene?
Not that I'm aware of, as long as it's posted business on the agenda.
Yeah, it's actually town by town how, how they address these HCAs. Some of them do it just through the mayor, but I wasn't sure if we needed to come back for another hearing. But what I'm, what I'm hearing is so long as Town Council is happy with it, that, Marlene, you'll just reject it.
Well, run that by Town Council, too.
I will, and I'll look at the Cannabis Control statute.
In other words, not a full public hearing that's advertised, that's.
I think there's been some public hearings, not for, not for this particular program, but in the past, from the Planning Board has had planning, has had.
Planning Board is a hearing.
Yeah, they, because that's where the guidelines would, would come forward, right?
Sure. And just for residents to understand, this one is in, just like, we had, we had discussion about another HCA a couple of times over the last month or so, and this also has the 3% back, that comes back to the town, so, so people know. Okay.
Very good.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rajiv.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Night, Bernie. Night, Jared.
See you, guys.
See ya.
Okay, so we need to backtrack here. Town Administrator Report.
The, Daniel, where's the?
The what?
Finance Committee, aren't we doing them at 6:00?
6:30 is supposed to be coming, I hear people out in the hallway, so I don't know if they're making their way down here.
You're going to do your administrator report?
Whatever you'd like.
Yeah, let's, I'd like everything out of the way before.
I was hoping we'd get everything taken care of before budget reviews. This is just a quick update regarding the Comcast license renewal. John Novak, our Cable Access Manager, and I had our first negotiation meeting with Comcast last Friday morning and with Attorney Bill Solomon, who is representing the town. And it went well, we met with a senior manager that oversees the government and regulatory affairs for Comcast, and, you know, there were some questions, just clarifying some things, you know, I think Comcast had a, a different interpretation of our initial proposal, which you have a copy in your packet, but it is confidential. And Comcast is going to review the proposed plan with their financial officers, and they didn't indicate, John, when they'd be getting back to us, yeah. But I thought it went, went very well, and again, John's knowledge and professionalism was spot-on.
Thank you, John.
We appreciate you, John. So you'll keep us posted.
I will keep you up to date on that.
And then the other thing, this, there's, there's the request for the park, sorry, I need to.
Yes, so we've received, well, the Local Cultural Council has made some awards, grant application awards. New England Swing Orchestra received an award from the Local Cultural Council, and they're asking to use Smith Academy Park on June 16th between 5:00 and 7:00 that evening. And they also requested a rain date of June 23rd. That is a, June 16th, I believe is a Friday or Saturday.
I can look.
Thursday.
Oh, is it Thursday, maybe, yeah.
I'm just looking at the big calendar up on the wall.
I think it is, oh, right in front of me. And then I also received yesterday, another request, again, another Cultural Council Award, Ken Longstreet Bad News Jazz and Blues Orchestra, and they performed in the fall, in September, out here. So they're interested in using the park on Sunday, September 11th, from 5:00 to 7:00. So the, the one on the agenda, that is a 10-piece band. Ted Wirt is the director, and.
Do we require any kind of insurance or any, is there an application, a formal application?
Well, to the Local Cultural Council, there was, but the town doesn't, I mean, we, we need to.
Formulate something.
We, we do.
They're giving the funding for the, for the event.
Right, right.
I'm talking about, there should be some type of use form.
We, we do, yeah, town use form.
And there's, you know, I mean, we should ask Town Council about, you know, if there's any kind of.
And I would say we need to have the form similar maybe to when people are trying to use Alliance for the Lane or something. I mean, I've got to be honest, I don't think these types of things should have to come before the Board of Selectmen, right? It, it's an outdoor event, which I think are awesome, by the way. But we, we, we need to come up with a plan, who's going to manage that park? Shouldn't be, I don't believe it should be the Town Administrator or the Board of Selectmen. I mean, that wasn't part of the process, right? I, I don't know who it should be, but I know who it shouldn't be. And I think we need to come up with some, a person, a plan, a something that, that will help run and facilitate those things. I mean, I, I think it's a great, it's great to have it, and it's great to have these events, it's awesome, actually. But, but, you know, it's an outdoor park, I mean, is it, you know, I, I don't know, I.
Well, we, we do. I sort of disagree, I, there should be a, a standard form that everybody fills out.
Absolutely, should, we need to get organized about this.
Whatever they want to use, if they want to use, I mean, I don't know how much people use in this building anymore, but there should be a standardized form, and I do think that it should go before, it's not a big deal to bring it before the Selectmen to.
Well, it isn't yet, but it could be if there's going to be two or three events every weekend once it gets up and running and the pavilions there, I mean, I, you know.
Even more reason to manage it.
I mean, right now, it's manageable, but I understand what you're saying, Brian, is that it could eventually, yeah.
Well, then I think you have to have a cutoff, you, you apply so many days in advance, or you don't get to do it.
We do need to have a plan and, and get organized and have a form.
We start getting into weddings and the whole bit, so who's going to be in charge and take responsibility for that? It shouldn't, it's not, it shouldn't be the three of us, I don't believe. I, I mean, I don't think we need, we're going to decide it tonight, I think both these events are fine, I don't have a problem with it, but I think on a go-forward basis, as this becomes busier.
Yes.
Which is what we hope.
We need some, whatever, whoever we're going to do, a part-time person, one day a week, you know, have a giant calendar, so everything gets written down, because if it gets scattered, two people are going to, two different events are going to show up at the same time, and we're all going to go like this.
Yeah, so let me work on, on this pull information together, get a form, some type of sample form, have review of Town Council.
Community locally that has something similar, we have to recreate the wheel, just get it from somebody and.
Yeah, let's think about it, because we can try to figure out which organization should be responsible for overseeing that park as far as events and stuff.
I, I don't have a problem with people having, having it to be, to bring it here, I really don't. And, you know, so if you're going to use it, it has to be so many. It has to be so many, you know, days or weeks in advance or whatever.
Yeah, it has to be reasonable.
Okay, wait, it's, one more thing, I got it. So this shouldn't be that difficult, we have Alliance Pavilion, people go to the Lions Club, we have a, we have an American Legion, they go to the American. But one person there must be in charge of it.
Yes.
For the Lions Club, yes.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, that we don't need a Board of Selectmen to approve events that are going to be held in a park.
I don't know, it's public, it's public space, I mean.
Tomorrow, they don't need our permission, it's a park. So, so it's about, it's about scheduling, keeping a schedule of what's happening and when. Who is that going to fall upon?
It's also, I think, about making sure that each application and the requirements for being, for being there are uniform.
I absolutely agree with that.
So let's see what some other communities do.
Absolutely, be consistent, yeah.
Are we supposed to sign this architectural thing?
Yes, the change order, I am asking the Board to consider, after we've reviewed this, if you have any questions, I would ask the Select Board to, it would just be the Select Board Chair that would sign this change order.
They're out there waiting for us, right?
This is.
The Finance Committee.
To increase the architectural services budget?
Yes, by an additional $3,033. So we're going to rebid the project and the current contract.
If it's rebidding it, I'm all for it.
We haven't expended the original contract with the architect, as again, this would be just in addition. So then the total contract with this new change order would be for $14,308.
So we just need a vote?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to increase, to pay the $3,033 to, for additional architectural services to the Fitch Architectural Community Design.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right. So just quickly, regarding the Swing Orchestra's request, you, you want to hold off on that before granting?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's approved, we just, well, I make a motion to approve the request for the Swing Orchestra in June.
You made a motion, too?
I did make a motion, to approve the Swing, yep, with a rain date of the 16th, with a rain date of the 23rd.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And that change order is in the signature folder, I believe.
I did that, it's just for me, so I took care of that. Okay, I think we're ready, does, does anybody need a break first, or I'm good, but?
Well, can we take two minutes, you want to shut off the?
We are back, we are joined by the Finance Committee, it's budget season, so we'll be doing this quite a bit. We're going to be looking at a few different budgets tonight, is that right, three?
Three.
And we're going to start with you, Chief Flaherty, if you want to join us up on the hot seat.
I hear something buzzing.
Yeah, something is, there's like an alarm going off.
Yeah, it sounds like it's the alarm over at Capital One.
Oh, okay.
Well, we can't do anything about that, though. Okay, so we'll give you the floor.
All right, so obviously, submitted the budgets, you know, a month ago or so. I've actually had the opportunity to sit down with Finance Committee when we were talking about some of the ambulance staffing, and I got to come in and talk to the Select Board as well. So I think the, the budget itself is, you know, it's kind of sitting there. My understanding is, I believe that there's probably going to be a few questions. Looking at the, the fire department budget as a whole, and the ambulance and the emergency management, fire does have obviously the biggest increase, so when you see that first paragraph, you know, it's 105% increase. It's, it's not a secret, I've been into meetings a couple times, and it's looking to add staffing, and that is really the bulk of what the cost increase would be coming to. So it's about $186,000 or $180,000, excuse me, would be increased to cover salaries for per diem or potentially full-time, if I can't get per diem staff. And that was originally to go to a 16-hour-a-day coverage for fire and EMS. Everybody knows that we don't cover all of our calls, we're still relying on call volunteers, and that is just going down, is the number of people that are willing to volunteer, while our call volume is going up. So that is the bulk of the increase on the fire side. I don't know if Select Board and Finance, if you want to look line by line, or I'm assuming. or I'm assuming everybody's had a chance to kind of look over the Excel spreadsheet as a whole. But that was, that was the bulk of the increase in my budget, was to add that staffing.
So, so can I just, for clarity, for my own clarity? So the staffing is not, you're not, is, it's per diem that you're going to, that you're looking to hire? You're not looking to hire a full or part-time person? Or do I have that wrong?
The goal would be to try to fill it with per diem. But I'll be honest, finding people that want to only work per diem, you know, it's good to fill in some of the roles, but theoretically, you know, the weekends alone right now. Obviously, I got the approval, we're in the process. It's still 20 shifts in a month. And to try to find enough people to fill that, plus adding the weekdays, it's not as easy as I was hoping it was going to be because the healthcare workers are burnt out in the last two years. So it's becoming a little bit harder to fill than what I was expecting. The EMT basics, I'm doing pretty well. Actually have eight or nine onboard already. The medics are becoming a little bit harder to find right now because they're already overworked in their primary jobs. So with that, there is the potential that, you know, one or, one of the positions overall would have to be a full-time position to make it worth somebody taking it. Instead of saying, well, you can only work two days a week because of our 20-hour kind of limit, and that becomes a full-time position after that, or you're entitled to benefits. Lot of, some people just aren't interested, so I, I don't want to go out and say that if they're all, it's all going to be per diem. There is the possibility to hire as a full-time. But my budget has already, what you see in front of you includes the ability to sick time, vacation time, and then the ability to backfill those positions based off of the amount of vacation and sick everyone is entitled to in a calendar year.
So then if, sorry.
No, go ahead.
So then if it was done by per diem, then you would end up coming in less.
Correct. So that, the fourth line down on my sheet where it's $19,000, that backfilling for time off, sick time, overtime costs, yes, that is the line that would ultimately come down. So the 161 in line three, that would stay no matter what. That is the hourly rate for paramedics and basics to cover the seven days a week, 16 hours a day, or the additional hours above and beyond what myself and the full-time guy work now.
So this full-time, would they be working the same day shift that you work? Or would this be like, you're going to work, I'm just throwing it out, 8 to 5 and, or whatever, and then the other guy is going to work, or a girl is going to work 3 to 11? Or how do you, you know?
Currently, right now, the two of us that are full-time work a Monday-through-Friday schedule. So I work 7 to 3, and I have him, right now, I have the full-time guy staggered coming in at 7:30. So he works 7:30 to 3:30. So it gives us a little bit of extra on the other end, once I leave the building. I don't always leave on time. I rarely leave on time. So these people would then be coming in, and they would be working a 3 to 11 shift. We would, I would shift the full-time guy during the day. We would both work 7 to 3, and then the evening shifts would be a 3 to 11 shift.
So we currently have another full-time person.
A paramedic and a basic? So two people on 3 to 11?
Yes. It's the only, to be honest, you know, I've been in, this is the only way to do it. It's, it requires two people to run an ambulance, and we have, we obviously want to provide the paramedic coverage.
Right.
So that's kind of what I put in as a proposal, is to, to provide the, the treatment that the residents deserve, and this is how we have to do it. I'm not saying that in the future, you know, a firefighter could pick up a shift occasionally because right now, there is the ability for that to happen, but the pay is the same. It doesn't change whether or not it's an EMT or a firefighter. The firefighters and the EMTs get paid the same, so if it happened to be that they picked up a shift, it doesn't really change anything monetary-wise. But it still requires two people to, to do a call.
So can you just, in your fire ambulance budget, what's the, you know, with, with the additions, what's, what, how much more will it cost the town this year versus, or next year, I should say, in '23 versus what it's costing us now? And don't include whatever, right?
So don't include which portion?
No, no, no. I'm, I'm way overthinking. What's the difference in the budget, the numbers?
It would be an additional $180,000.
Okay, that's what I would.
To cover those.
That 180, which, which is there. And right now, we've got ARPA that's covering, hopefully, it's going to be covering some weekends.
Correct.
Until June 30.
Until June 30.
Until June 30th, but then we're, okay. And I know that doing additional EMT, you know, ambulance calls is going to bring a little more revenue. It's obviously not going to pay for all of this, but have you, if, have you put any numbers together? If we do, you know, do you, you know, I can't remember your number. Did you do 400 calls last year?
358 were dispatched.
358, and, and so if you covered an additional, say, 100 calls that you didn't cover this year, what kind of?
About 70,000. $700 per call is the average of collections.
Somewhere around, yeah.
The last year in the end, with what we didn't cover for calendar '21, was about $57,500 that we weren't able to collect because we didn't cover the call.
Because you didn't.
We didn't have staff.
Yeah, okay. So that would offset, doesn't really offset, it, it helps.
A third.
Yeah, roughly.
So you, you average about a call a day?
Yes. When we looked at what last year's was, it was just shy of a call a day.
How is that, last year, now, I'm going to get, so last year being '21 or?
Calendar '21.
Calendar '21?
Correct. Because all of our reporting, especially reporting to the state, is all based off of the calendar year, not the fiscal year.
Sorry, I get, I'm, my brain is trying to run between calendar and fiscal, and it gets.
I think the, the trend is important because, you know, we've also had COVID. So, like, do you remember what 2019, 2020, and '21 were?
So the three-year trend was actually showing as an 8% increase on the ambulance, and it was showing at a 17% increase on the fireside over the three years.
Would, would these individuals have fire certification as well?
I would be looking to get as many of them as dual role as possible, yes. There are some people that don't have any interest in doing the fireside, but.
You kind of need that, too.
It, it's not as critical as the ambulance side of things because I still do cover the fire calls. And sometimes, it is only with one or two people on the fire truck, so we do get the call handled. We don't call mutual aid for fire calls, but we're calling it mutual aid for ambulance at a very alarming rate. It was 93 times out of 358 that mutual aid had to come to town.
So for the benefit of people watching or listening, or however they're watching this, can you go over, you know, you discussed with us, you know, when you met with us a few weeks ago, you know, other options? If, for some reason, the town didn't approve this, or we couldn't find, you know, talk about the options of if we tried to get more help from, say, South County or North Hampton, and what those costs would be.
So I have not sat and had a meeting specifically with North Hampton on what their cost would be currently. This was a topic that came up a number of years ago, well before I took over. North Hampton is, is running higher call volume, too. They're not really interested in adding us.
I was just going to say.
I, I would have to, to venture to say for North Hampton, I would think that you're talking probably at least, and again, not to put an ambulance here, not to have full coverage, just the idea that we are kind of part of their system and the privilege of them coming here. I'm going to say that they're going to probably put a number out of about $3,000 to $350,000 a year, would be my guess.
Right.
And then that would mean no revenue if we were to do away with our ambulance. So that's also, that's just straight money out.
Based on what?
Just based on what?
Call volume.
Call volume.
No, I'm saying that number you think would come from North Hampton.
Because my take from North Hampton and, and watching what they've done over the years, I've obviously been around in, in this area for 20 years doing this. They're going to say that they require two more additional staff to be able to help cover Hatfield, but they will not put in ambulance here, so.
I, I also want to be clear. I don't think it's at all an option. Based on, you know, Bob and I have sat down with Chief Dab and.
No, no. And I bring it up because I, I think townspeople.
Townspeople will ask.
Need to see, you know, what our options are going, going forward.
But maybe in a more concrete way, too.
And South County, when you, did you tell us?
So I did meet with South County.
$250,000 or something?
So South County, I did meet with, or I met with the Director up there. And he proposed based off of our call volume. And now, mind you, when I spoke to him, our call volume was at about the 315, 320 is what we had been averaged.
Yep.
So obviously, that has increased. He gave me a price based off of, they have a whole formula for the three towns that are involved in that. At that time, he told me that it would be $270,000 to $290,000 to have South County be the ambulance provider for Hatfield. Not an ambulance in town, not 24-hour coverage. That is just the privilege of being part of South County as it sits.
But South County is a 24-hour coverage, aren't they?
They are 24-hour in service, but that doesn't guarantee us a truck because that means if they're Sunderland, Deerfield, Wheatley, or Mutual Aid, Deterners, or Greenfield, which they do, that still leaves us without an ambulance. That would leave the town of Hatfield without an ambulance.
They run one.
But you would still pay $270,000 to $290,000 even if they can't cover the call.
They run one truck?
They have one, one truck.
A three-town?
Correct.
So, if I could hop on that. So if there, if that's what that cost is, rough, 29, roughly $300,000, oh, 275, whatever, 275, let's say. And your, your budget all-in that we have in front of us, that's ambulance and fire, is 350, correct?
The, the fire is 350, and then ambulance is an additional 97.
Okay, so there's another sheet, another total. What I was trying to do was make the comparison of, if you're already at 290, and you're relying on someone to come from South County, and there's nobody actually here sitting to, to come to you for, for another $50,000 or so, to know you have all this additional coverage in town, you know, would, would make sense to me.
It, it is a little hard to look at the 357 and 97 that the ambulance budget is currently projected as, of what I submitted. Because you'd have to go in and take into account the fact that the rest of that budget also is still regular fire calls, fire training.
That's what I mean. That's what I'm saying. You're getting a lot more for our 350 than paying out 290 somewhere else, is my point.
Correct. This would, this would essentially give 16-hour-a-day EMS and also fire coverage, and then we would continue the overnight on-call. We would not be in the station for 24 hours a day, but we would essentially be a 24-hour fire and ambulance department with this particular model because we do on-call for the ambulance on the overnights as it is.
This plus this equals that.
There is an on-call pay overnight?
Correct. We pay a, a small hourly pay on the overnight, and then they would get their hourly pay if they go on the call.
And so we're making the overnight calls right now?
Yes. I think in the, the six months that I've put it in, I think we missed one. And it was, one person went, the other person slipped through their pager by accident. And I got many apologies first thing in the morning. It was, it was a fluke. Other than that, we've covered every other overnight call that there has been since September.
I think it's so important for, you know, all these, all the departments are going to come before us. Costs for everything has gone up. But I think it's so important for the townspeople to, even though you might hear or, or think it's a, a big price tag for certain things, not only police and, not only fire and ambulance, but, but others that are going to come before us as well. They're there when you need them, though, right? You call 911, you want somebody to be whipping into your driveway as quickly as possible. And sometimes, you just don't understand that until you've actually had to use the service yourself. And that's when you sit there and go, thank goodness we have the people we have and the department we have.
And we're not waiting for a response from out of town. It's a long wait.
And, and believe me, I, I understand the fiscal side of this when I was writing this proposal earlier this year. But it is, and I know talking with the Select Board and even with Finance over the last couple of weeks, it, it is also a matter of what are we providing for the town? But we also don't just respond to the residents of Hatfield. We go to 91, we're in businesses, we're out on 5 and 10. So it's not only the 3,300 residents that we're responsible for. We do have to go in every medical and every fire call within our district. So it is that, and I could tell you that with a lot of those calls that we did miss last year, several of these patients were waiting upwards of 15 to 18 minutes because of how our process works with dispatch. And then we did have one patient that unfortunately had to wait nearly a half an hour, about a half an hour, because nobody was available. With this particular model, chances are the longest anybody would have to wait is going to be probably about six or eight minutes. And that's obviously because we'd have to drive from here potentially to, you know, Malloy Ave or get up to the far parts of 91, which just takes an extra couple of minutes to get there. But, you know, most of our calls are going to be in the, probably about the four-to-six-minute range will be on scene from the time of dispatch, which is the standard that we look to shoot for. I could tell you, working from my time in Amherst, there was parts of Amherst we couldn't even get to, and that was a full-time 24-hour department, and we still couldn't get to some calls in six minutes. It's just pure distance.
Location, yeah.
Have you looked into any other options? You know, you know, going back to the fiscal side of this, and, you know, I certainly want, don't want to sell, want to, you know, we want people to respond, we want people to get to our calls. But fiscally, from a budget point of view, and we talked about this last week, you know, and as Diana and Brian said, there's going to be other departments looking for, for money, you know, there are going to be some tough options out there to try to figure out how, how we do this. As much as we may want in our hearts to make sure that we can cover all this, I'm not sure that we'll be able to. It's going to take some time, and we, you know, and I want that people in Hatfield to be kind of prepared for that. We talked a little bit about the possibility last week, you know, that at some point in time, I don't know if it's this year, I don't know if it's next year, but we're going to need some sort of operating override in order to, to keep up with, with, with some of these costs. So, anyway, so I just want to put that out there. You've heard it from me before, and I'm a former EMT. I believe in what we're, what, what we're doing and what we're trying to do. And it's more discouraging to hear what it would cost for other services to cover us. We wouldn't get any of the revenue. We can't be guaranteed that our residents are going to be taken care of. It, it really puts us in a pretty tough spot to try to figure out going forward, so, anyway.
It is hard, realizing that in, in Hampshire County, we are one of only two municipal-run ambulance services that are still in the, you know, acting as a call department. Others have gone into a very large regional system, multiple towns. I could tell you, you know, South County is obviously the regional for Franklin County. We, unfortunately, we kind of sit on an island here in Hatfield when you look at us. We are on the border of the county, we have the river that precludes us from joining with anybody there, and North Hampton is our other full-time, and they're, they're just not going to be inclined to want to try to take this on, or it's going to come with probably a very large price tag, bigger than what I have proposed here.
And we have no options to the west either.
And there's no options to the west. I mean, as it is, there's parts of Hatfield that we don't go to. We have mutual aid, and we have since the 70s to cover parts of Williams, or parts of Hatfield via Williamsburg.
Who covers Williamsburg EMS? Does North Hampton?
Is it Goshen?
So Highland Ambulance actually does the medical calls over there, and Williamsburg Fire handles the fire calls. For regular alarms. If there's a fire, we have to go because it's our jurisdiction, so that.
Right.
It has to.
Understood.
But, you know, I, we've, I've talked to members of the department, you know, because we do obviously do the on-call and the overnight. I'll be honest, our current members, they're just not interested in making sure that they are stuck at home or whatnot for 250 or 265 an hour, just in case there's a call. They, they want this to be a, I'm going to get paid, I'm going to be here for a job, and you're going to pay me for my knowledge of life-saving. And honestly, I can't blame them.
That's fair.
It's.
Oh, no, it's very fair. I mean, if I look back, it's probably one of the reasons that I decided years ago that I was going to be done because, because the amount of educate, you know, continual education and continual training, it gets more every year. And if you're not doing it as part of like a job, it's pretty hard. of like a job, it's pretty hard
It is.
to justify it on a, on a volunteer basis, so.
I've, I've looked at the proposals, I've looked at different options, um, you know, the on-call, the, every other option that I could look at before Ms. Island and I met back in July or August, I had reached out and got a lot of these other numbers to find out what was going on because I knew that it was the potential question is, is essentially Hatfield EMS disbanded, and it doesn't appear that there's really a good option that's going to really save the town any money. And I know this is a lot, large chunk.
Mm-hmm.
But there's not really another good option where we're also taking care of our residents and doing what I, I spoke to Mr. Jaworski earlier today, is that, you know, we had buying the medic equipment, buying the ambulance because we had to, it was, it wasn't going to pass inspection potentially, and we're just kind of heading bit by bit over the last few years, heading in this direction. Unfortunately, it's, the last two years have made it a little bit more to the forefront because less people are willing to volunteer across the country. I'm not, I'm not alone in this. I'm not the only, only department.
And, and if you have a crew working, say, that three-to-eleven shift, are there, I mean, they're obviously not going to be on calls constantly
Correct.
because we all know, but I'm assuming that there is other work that you can have them do to, you know, so, so they're not just kind of sitting and waiting, or?
Unfortunately, not really how staffed fire and EMS works, and I, I could say this for 10 years of doing this full-time. There are some days that, you know, there's little projects or things that need to get done, but there are times that, I mean, I work 24-hour shifts, I sometimes could sit for 20 hours out of 24, once my vehicle checks were done and
Right.
you know, some daily routine. Unfortunately, I can't, I wouldn't be able to have each person take on administrative function because then there's a lot of, obviously there's HIPAA laws, there's certain things that not everybody is privy to that type of information to be going in and, and doing certain parts of it that really is an administrative function. So it's something that I have to do, taking care of the billing and certain things, because I have to look at the reports and I have to CQI them. So I need to make sure that they're okay before they get sent off.
Yeah, and I, and I bring it up because, you know, I, I think it's something that people are going to ask, you know.
I mean, they're, you know, clean the truck, wash the vehicles, do some chores, but there's not going to be a lot else to necessarily keep them busy for an entire eight-hour shift if they're not on calls.
And then what would be, I mean, what if, what if the trend changes? Would we be able to go back?
You could, but I've always kind of used that adage, you, you don't pay fire and EMS for, to be there when the call happens. It, it's going to happen, so you're, we're there. It's not if it's there, it's going to happen, but you can't plan an emergency. You know, we get, we get notification about snowstorms, we know when schools are closed, like, there's certain things, but emergency work is not that realm.
No, I understand that.
Country. So it's very hard to be like, okay, we'll cut down and we'll only go to three days a week, but then what happens on the other four days, and now all of a sudden, like we had in January, forty-five calls in thirty days, and now you're doing two calls a day or calling a half a day? What if those are the days that now don't have staff and you don't?
And I totally understand that, but this is a big, this is a big jump, and it is in response to what seems to be like a, a quick bump in the amount of calls.
I mean, it, again, it's steady. I mean, we're looking at an eight to a nine percent increase for a trend.
Three years, but then we know like January was really high, high call volume, and then it felt all of a sudden very immediate. I just, you know, it is about trends and
It is about trends, but
I mean, it's also about, I, I don't want residents to not have a, a response. I mean, I've been clear about that.
Yeah.
But I also think there is the, there is the fiscal component of this and the return on investment.
I mean, the, there's, obviously there's other options as we move into the budget. This is the whole picture. This is the sixteen-hours-a-day, seven-days-a-week, and as Mr. Jaworski brought up back in December, is there the option to start piecemealing it? Absolutely. If we were doing the weekends, or we're going to be starting the weekends in March, once everybody gets their physicals, does that, is that a lesser option that we can still at least provide some of the coverage? And it is our times that we're having a harder time covering? Yes, it absolutely comes with a less, less of a cost to that, and we could slowly bring it to sixteen hours a day, seven days a week. I'm, I'm absolutely fine with something like that. I am, I'm fully aware that this is a lot to put in in one fell swoop.
Can, can you just be prepared with maybe a couple of those options? And, and I'm sure we'll, we'll have you back. This is part of a, you know, once we meet with everybody and get, get an idea what folks are looking for, you know, generally then what happens is we get as many people around the same table and say, okay, folks, how are we going to make this work? How are we going to put a budget forward? So.
Continuing the same that we're doing, it's ninety thousand, eighty-nine, seven, sixty-five, for the Friday evening and sixteen on Saturday and Sunday that we're doing between now and June, but that's a full year's worth of weekend coverage.
So it's about half, so it's, okay.
Good.
Just a good thought, your thought about, do you think we could maybe attract more people on a volunteer on-call basis if we covered the weekends? So the weekends were no longer in play for those people? Would that make it easier?
I don't believe so, to be honest. I, I think it's just that people aren't willing to volunteer. People are working forty-plus hours a week in a regular job, kids, sports, you name it, you know, pretty much every year has been through some of this. I think that's really just the part of it. I, well, I think it will alleviate a little bit of the stress off people, yes, but I don't think it's a, a fix that all of a sudden that, oh, you're going to cover the weekends, so now everybody's going to start coming Monday through Thursday. I, I just don't see that being an option.
I wonder if the, my thought on it was too, that throwing it out there as, trying to fill these per diem instead of through full-time options, I wonder if that will be successful because a lot of people in this field, they do work funny hours, and then they have these long periods of time where they may want to pick shifts up, so we may work, that may work out.
It could. Like I said, it, you know, hiring the basics right now is going fairly well in a, in a week or a little over a week, um, as far as hiring. Another interview tomorrow, so tho, that, those shifts are gotten to the point where if any, but everybody just picked up two shifts for a month, I cover the entire month all the time. It's, right now, it is the medics that are having a hard time finding them. Everybody's in the same boat, so we're all pulling from the small, same pool, and the last two medic classes are behind in graduating because of COVID.
Right.
So the pool is less until they finish their schooling, which is coming in the next couple of weeks for some of the programs.
All right.
Okay, any other questions for Chief?
Thanks very much, Bob.
Anything on the ambulance, or we kind of covered all of it, I think, together
We kind of covered it all.
It's there.
And I'm sure we're going to have you back.
Yeah.
So.
And the ambulance had a, a slight increase, and that was to try to also promote somebody from within, pay for them to go and go to paramedic school, so we can get some of that staffing. So on the ambulance side, you do see one, this eleven thousand increase.
Okay.
It's all, it's all pretty, pretty much right in the spreadsheet and in my letter.
Okay.
Your cover sheet helps a lot, by the way.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, it does, it does bring.
Try to be informed, makes it a whole lot easier.
So we're doing, thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
We're doing police as well, right?
Ethan, Police Chief DeKoschak is on.
I, I would like to take that up. Hopefully, it won't, won't be maybe as long as on fire, because then I'd like to dedicate the rest of the meeting to the, to the school department. Chief, are you with us?
Probably out on a call.
No, he's here. It looks like you're talking, but we can't hear you, Mike.
Your speaker's not, is it, is it far enough?
No. Nope. Mike, we can't hear you.
He's green.
He is green. And it lights up, but then.
Reboot the crazy camera device.
I know. It's okay, Bob.
Hold on, Chief. Trying something different. You know, that's what I do with our robots all the time. Sometimes you just unplug them and plug them back in and you see if it works.
Mike, can you speak so we can see if we fix it?
This computer audio is on.
Yeah, he's trying to.
Mike, I think it's your, I think it's your end. I think, uh-oh.
Battery is running low. It's plugged in.
Lord, have mercy, we're having.
Plugged in, isn't it? Yeah.
We plugged into something?
That's, is it this?
Yeah, but it's plugged, it's plugged in. It was earlier. Isn't it?
It's just a screen.
Now we're running out of power.
We pay the electric.
Plugged in over there.
I promise I did.
Shutting down.
Plugged in over here.
Okay.
And that's strange because we are plugged in.
Yeah.
My boy.
Oh, we died. Well, bear with us, everybody.
Oh, they all shut it off and turned it back on.
It wouldn't be a meeting in 2022 unless there was a glitch.
Twenty-one months and we still are going through those.
Maybe we should just get a speakerphone, like.
The good old-fashioned way.
Yeah.
The good old days.
Even fancy, like one of those spider ones that sits on the table would be great.
We still use those.
Well, well, if we lose Chief DeKoschak, we can do him at the next meeting.
We could do Chief at the next meeting.
Schools here live.
Which is cool.
Yeah. I apologize for the chief, I feel bad, but, you know.
Well, honestly, it would be better if he was in person.
It would be better if he was in person.
We're just trying quickly, and then we'll reschedule
Then we'll punt.
Hot in here?
Yes. It is warm in here. I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, probably for you. Probably for you.
You know, when it gets warm and then it gets cold again, that cold is just so much worse. If it stayed cold, you kind of get used to it.
I always go to outlook, always do that. Don't, no, it's not. We always do it that way.
If that light is off, it's usually on blue. Did that power thing, that camera thing?
Something's going on with the power.
Well, this, this computer loves power.
Has anyone texted?
Chief DeKoschak's all set for next week.
Okay, so we're just going to move forward.
We're back.
Whenever.
Yeah, two weeks, we're meeting.
Two weeks, but, yeah, whenever.
March first is the next meeting. It looks like we're back. Okay, so now muted, let me turn this.
These aren't on. Okay.
I can't.
Oh, hey, doo.
Hey, so now
Keep it clean.
Talking, so we can hear each other, but you guys can hear us.
Interesting. We, we lost our screens here.
Just turn it on, you hit the power button.
Oh.
It'll go off. All right, so you wanted it.
Yes, can we, can we go through this?
Thanks, John.
See the police one?
Okay.
Go ahead, Chief.
Okay, um, does anybody have any questions? My budget's pretty simple and straightforward. The only thing that's in there is obviously a, like every year I ask, or I know I'm not supposed to, but I do a two percent for everybody, but other than that, there's no surprises.
This says three percent.
My budget says three percent?
Your cover page says
It says three percent. It's two for
Increase the salaries.
For salaries and additional one is part-time increase.
I don't have, um, yet, then I put three percent, I apologize. I could have sworn I put two percent, so maybe I made a mistake on it.
Yeah, it's a two percent cola, but a one percent increase
In the part-time.
In the part-time budget of one hundred and fifty-eight hours.
Oh, all right, so.
Okay.
Sounds like we're talking about the same thing, just a different question.
Okay, I don't have any questions about it.
So, right, so, so just for my sake, for town's sake, right now, the police, the police department, you're covering about sixteen hours a day, seven days a week of at least one person on, is that, do I have that correct?
Correct.
So you're, the only time we don't really have coverage in town is 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM or something like that.
Um, so during the week, no coverage from midnight till 5:30 AM. I meant 5:30.
Yep.
Um, so during, during the weekdays, 5:30 AM to midnight, and then weekends is eight to, 8:00 AM to midnight, so Saturday and Sunday, you have no coverage from midnight to 8:00 AM.
Yeah, okay.
Is your call volume staying about steady, Michael?
Um, it is. I mean, it's, it's up some, but, um, we can, we can handle more than we're actually, you know, doing now at this point in time, so we're not overly taxed, um, you know, with, with calls at this time, so, um, you know, really nothing needs to change at this point in time. You know, something we can plan for in the future, uh, we can sit down and talk. The current climate would suggest that I double up the night shift for, just for safety reasons, um, but again, that's not something I'm looking for, uh, this year at all, so we'll just, we'll see how things go. We're doing okay, we're holding our own.
Chief, what, what, what happened with this new state law with
Training.
The training and, you know, how is that going to affect your 20th budget?
Um, so I, I, we had several meetings last year, you all recall.
Yep.
And so we've been lucky, extremely lucky so far. I've kept overtime costs all the way down, uh, we're not incurring those, and we've had no major incidents where I've had to, uh, use a lot of people and burn up a lot of payroll. So as it stands right now, if I continue the way we're going, I won't have to ask for a dime, we're going to be very, very close.
Okay.
And everybody will meet whatever this new law, the requirements of this new law, the training requirements?
They will. So right now, I have three of my part-timers who are in the Bridge Academy. They've been through, they take care of all of their online training, and now they're doing the physical in-person training. All three of them have, have done eighty hours of that physical training. They each have another forty to go over the next couple of months. So, so long as my payroll stays the same, then we should be okay, barring any massive emergency or anything like that, so.
Okay.
And my expenses, you know, obviously, I mean, and stuff like that, expenses for them went, uh, went up too, but I was able to offset that, um, not paying some user agreement fees this year because we had switched over to, um, the state's record-keeping system, uh, which was something that was a long time coming. So the money that I normally spend on my license, uh, fees and my license agreements, I didn't have to spend this year because the state paid for them, so I offset those costs on that one.
Any other questions for the chief?
Nope, thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. You know the budget situation. I'm sure we'll be back in touch.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, we're ready for the school.
Let's do it. We can certainly welcome more of you up here. Maybe Danielle, if you want to come up closer to the mic, it's better. Or move the mic back.
Whatever it does.
Get all the usual suspects. Yeah, you can stay there.
You can stay there. Uh, yes.
Yes?
From February 3rd.
Yes.
Is Becca still here? Where is she? Oh, she's out there.
So thank you for having us tonight. Appreciate it. I'm happy to do sort of a full presentation or zero in on questions that you might have for the sake of time.
I would do this.
Go over the document.
Yeah, I would say let's do the whole thing.
Yep.
Well, yeah, this gives a good overview of what we're looking for in the current.
In a way that's broken down and easy for people who may watch this.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, in terms of our budget this year, our goal, as we put it together with the administrative team this year, we're all relatively new. What I asked for from the administrators was to really put together, looking at the deliverables from our district improvement plan, which are to provide stable and adequate resources to meet the needs of its students, provide access to high-quality education for social, emotional, and educational needs that prepare global citizens, and creates a safe school environment, and offers meaningful professional development opportunities for our staff. We do want to make sure that our staff, all of us, continue to learn. And so, we put together what I would refer to as a level services budget that essentially looks at 2022, FY22, and we maintain all sections and levels of teachers at both Smithfield Academy and at Hatfield Elementary School. We would maintain two preschool classrooms, which were added in the last cycle. We would keep the electives that we have at SA, keep our sports teams as is for FY23. We talked about, and we'll need to relook at this, but to look at a replacement cycle. Currently, it's in discussion at the capital plan, and we'll need to address that when decisions are made there. And we would continue to support existing software that is necessary to support our math, certainly our math program and our ELA program, but also in other areas in foreign language, for example, that we use an extensive piece of software as well. So, in terms of the budget going forward, it supports the existing number of staff, a projected similar enrollment for our student body that is made up both Hatfield residents and our school choice population. We are not adding positions, but it is important to note that we did add two positions this year after the budget cycle was developed, the preschool position, as I discussed, as well as the a special education position that we put into the budget to invest in our programming for special needs so that we could make sure that we didn't incur other costs in terms of placements in higher, oftentimes higher placements for private and even collaborative placements for special needs students. We would have the same number of custodians, same number of administrative assistants, and the same number of administrators that we currently have to run the school system.
Can I ask, can I interrupt?
Sure.
So, there's a slight change in the HES numbers and then an additional 10 students projected for Smith Academy. What are those based on?
So, we are right now in the midst of trying to put together a pretty aggressive campaign, media campaign to get more school choice students. So, we're hoping to really capture another, you know, a larger group of school choice students that predominantly would be focused at Smith Academy.
Do you have projections of students that may leave the district that are already here?
I don't have that, but we could probably start to survey parents on that process.
I think you should.
Yeah.
That's a question, Mike. I'm sorry. I don't want him to, like, get into your flow.
I don't have a rhythm.
From your presence. Okay. But since Diana asked a question, I have something to piggyback on that.
Sure.
So, I was looking at the current enrollment and I see that there's 26 children in the current sixth grade at HES. This is per Department of Educat-- this is online stuff that I grabbed from the state. So theoretically, those 26 would move into Smith Academy. Who knows, right? Into the seventh grade, but I see that there's 41 students currently seniors at Smith Academy. So those 41 will be leaving. So there's a net loss of 15 students at Smith Academy. Here's my question and, or, some of this might be food for thought for, when you guys have a school committee meeting, but if you have 170 now, you're gonna lose 15 potentially if all 26 come up, 41 leave. So you're actually gonna have to, according to your projection, have 25 students, school of choice students, on top of what you have now.
Right.
Do we really think that's doable? And I'm just talking because this is how you're basing your budget, so that's why I'm asking this question.
I mean, that's the goal, right? I mean, we're really trying to look at advertising and do a program with a media consultant and really try to push it out there so that we can get the millennial parents to pay attention to us, and frankly, it's not just for school choice. It's for our other groups of students to stay here and remember what they have, right?
Yep.
So however we net it, whether it's school choice, our own students who are currently here, or our own students who are currently going elsewhere. However we do it, so we're hopeful that that plan will get them back here.
And financially, it doesn't matter whether those students are joining in at Smith Academy or at the elementary school. An added student financially is an added headcount, so while this projection might show a heavier number at Smith Academy, we might find that we have a better ability to draw in the younger age. So, but I think in terms of the overall headcount number, there was a comfort level. I don't know that it's settled exactly where every, every spot goes.
Understood.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I don't think it, I mean, I understand that.
So the number appears to be 400 is what we're hoping for the district.
Correct.
I would, I think it might be as part of the budget process, a useful tool to maybe, I know you send surveys out for a lot of different things.
Yeah.
Maybe send surveys out about thoughts on people staying in the district.
Yeah, I mean, there's absolutely been a steady decline in the numbers. The, in, again, I was online looking at the different numbers. The school of choice numbers for sure have come down over the last three or four years, almost, I don't know the exact number, roughly 40 students. I mean, that's a ton of mon-- ton of students and a ton of money comes with that. It looks like our, from a public perspective, public school perspective, and the number of students that we're paying, or the state's paying to choice out, seems to be fairly steady around low 30s, low to mid 30s. I don't know if that is only public school students or if that includes students from Hatfield that go to private schools and parochial schools as well. I don't think it is.
No, we can't pay for.
Because there's more of them as well.
Yeah, we can't pay for private.
So, you know, we used to, you know, four years ago, we had 439 students. This year, we have just under 400, I think. So, I hope your media blitz works. You know, we've done it in the past. It's been successful in the past. We certainly used to be, and hopefully will be again, or continue to be, a destination school district. But it seems to have changed over the last few years, quite honestly, for whatever reason.
Just as a point of reference, in fiscal year 18, we had 129 choice students. This year, we're at 120. So the highest in our recent years was 141, so we're, we're 20 below our peak in the last six years. But we're, you know.
Well, you, I mean, I've got the numbers here going back a little, yeah.
Further and further, sure. There's a population change as well, but in terms of the last six years, we're, we're not terribly off the mark. I'm just, in terms of the overall number of kids coming into our school locally, not just school choice, it's grand changes.
Yeah, 2016, 130, 2017, 130, 2018, 130, 2019, 140, 2020, 140, last year, 134, this year, 117. As of December for this year.
Okay.
That's from the, that's from the DESI website.
So what are you proposing?
I'm not proposing anything. My proposal, I guess, is if the budget's being based on the anticipation of school choice students, I think you could be in trouble financially down the road if those don't materialize. That's what I'm saying. And from a numbers perspective in general, it doesn't have to be just school of choice, just in general.
We've known that from day one with this school choice. If we don't draw students to the school, if we don't draw, that's, that's the only thing that keeps our school in this town going. And it's, it's been that way long before, well, no, I can't say that.
It was instituted when I was on the school committee.
That's right.
Twenty years ago.
When we were on the school committee and going forward. It's why we had the discussion last week about the need, you know, to draw some young families to this town and get some people back, but anyway.
That's a whole nother discussion.
That's a whole nother discussion, but.
A very important one.
Yeah.
It is.
It's timely that master plan is being looked at, and I think that that could be a conversation definitely under that umbrella. So.
If the, if the student numbers don't, if you don't get the student numbers, do you know what that would mean? Would you have to drop a classroom? Or do you not know any of that yet?
So we don't know specifically yet. Again, it depends on where we get the students. What's challenging is it's a little easier at the elementary, quite frankly, because you have X number of kids and you have one teacher and you decide whether or not you want one classroom or two or three or what have you. But if the, to run a good, rigorous middle school and high school, you really have to be offering the kinds of electives that comprehensive high schools are offering. And so, you know, trying to run those means having the teachers, even though they're smaller class sizes. So, you know, our, our hope, my hope is that we're gonna attract those 25 students. They are in fact gonna come to Smith Academy, and we're gonna be able to run the kinds of electives that we're talking about for, to really offer a quality, quality education.
Do you expect some of the programming to change or be enhanced or something to be different than it has been so that, because we've done school of choice ads in the past, we, the town.
Right.
And so what will make it different? What will be the attraction that's gonna make us different from Frontier or Hadley or North Hampton? I mean, and again, you don't have to answer that. These are just kind of, I was thinking as you guys were coming in tonight, to sort of.
Those are the conversations we're having right now.
Something different, right? We used to, and we were, that's what we were doing before, but now other schools have caught up to us, I think, from a school choice perspective. Because we want to be that district, obviously, that parents and students come to be successful.
Right.
And so what, you know, again, it's gonna be, the question would be, what can we offer them that they might not be able to get somewhere else? Whatever that is, I don't know. I don't know what you guys are thinking of from a school committee perspective or school administration perspective, but you know, we've got to stand out differently.
Exactly.
Because if we're just another school, then what's the difference if they, wherever they go?
So just like any marketing plan would start, you talk to consumers, prospective consumers and existing consumers, which we have in our classrooms and at their homes, and so we're, we're gonna have focus groups, is what we've talked about, so.
I would, Christie, I would suggest too, if you could, maybe get some of the past, I mean, we used to always have the testimonies why people came. I know during the last hiring process back three or four years ago, when there were some administrator changeover, I remember one family in particular who had multiple children in the district, and one of her comments was she had seen changes through her children, not, she had seen changes educationally through the length of, through the time that those four different children of hers had been here. And it wasn't for the better is what she was saying. She said it nicer, you know. And that could have been one person's opinion, but I think those are the kinds of things you guys are gonna need to have to find out, like, you know, what did you mean? What do you think? Why, why aren't you coming back? Or why did you leave? Or whatever it is, because that, that's the only reason, way, right? Marketing, that's the only way you can address the thought, because perception is reality, right?
Exactly. Nope, we're going to be having a series of meetings for our district improvement plan to upgrade it, and so we'll be having those focus conversations to make sure that we hear from people, and we'd love to have people.
Well, good luck. I mean, you know, we all, we all, we all in this room want the school district to be successful. I mean, that's, that's important for a community.
It absolutely is. I mean.
Whether you have kids or not, it's really important for this town to have a strong school system.
Absolutely.
And so you weren't making any changes in the staff currently?
We're not making any changes in the number of staff.
Yeah, that's what I meant, okay. Because I do see that for elementary school, there's only 17 students in the first grade?
Yes.
But there's two classrooms?
Right.
That seems to be maybe a place to, that could be looked at to make a change.
And it is, absolutely, and that's, you know, another place for that school choice that makes it possible for us to attract kids.
Or one teacher. You can go the other way.
Yep.
I mean, that's not an unruly number of students in a class.
Yeah, we're doing this earlier, I think earlier in terms of the timetable, so that we can have all of this pretty much done before town meeting, so the last minute changes.
That would be great.
We can certainly bring it to an informed process and to the town meeting process for the school committee to make a decision. So that's, that's our goal.
Thank you.
We do.
And it's not, not always very easy to drop a classroom, because if you have to lay a teacher off, there's an additional cost to the town for, for doing that too, so that's something that has to be, we have to be careful about.
I agree, but there's also, you know, two classes for 17 students, two different separate classrooms.
I'm not arguing that.
I understand that there's the other.
I'm just.
I know, I know, Darryl.
Yeah, but we wanted to pay for it anyway for the year. Yeah, we're gonna, that's right.
Stay on unemployment. If they find other employment, you don't.
Right.
Yep.
Unless we leave there, then you're back on the hook, probably.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, we interrupted you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Good dialogue. We do search for other sources of revenue. I'm very impressed, since I've been here, the the effort and, and the success rate that our principals and our directors have in terms of going after grants and trying to, you know, fund different activities, oftentimes little extra activities. It's not, it's not operational in all cases, but it can offset some of that. We unfortunately did not get the $136,000 grant that we had applied for. It's something that will come up next year, so we, we certainly will reapply if it does. And then we're still in active pursuit of this Student Opportunity Act Rural Aid Grant that, that we could be a part of with our collaborative. And there's another Rural Aid Grant that we're, will be continuing to vie for. It's gonna be $36,000, and we'll be going after that as well.
I'm not seeing that in here either.
At the beginning, you had to go backwards.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. So you did not get the 136.
We did not get the 136.
Which was, was for, would have been for extra services.
It would have been for extra services, but services definitely that we could have utilized and had made benefit of. So, the changing these things. So, our budget, one of the things that I am trying to do is for my benefit, but if it benefits everybody else, and I hope it does, is the budget document that I prepared, I put together all of our funding sources in one place. And so going forward, when we, when we present and talk about the budget, everybody can see where we're, where we're applying different fund sources that we receive, as well as kind of talking about it at the 50,000-foot view, using control accounts rather than they're all there, but diving deep for the lines themselves, so you have the six control accounts, administration, instruction, other school services, facilities, acquisition improvement, programs and with others. And it just gives us a way, these are existing accounts, existing ways that we've, we've budgeted, so it wasn't difficult to put things together that way. And then the different accounts that we use that we are funding from, the major ones, obviously, are school choice. We do get a fairly large amount in circuit breaker and
Yeah.
federal grants, 240. And so this year, we've put together a budget that, again, for level services, moving forward, of $6,540,740, which would be the total funding compared to this FY22, which is $6,152,133,000. And much of the difference that we're talking about comes from, again, we do have this reduction of school choice. There's a very minimal reserve in there. But we will be receiving approximately 880,000, or using, excuse me, 880,000, and we're using some reserve to backfill that, because we used almost a million dollars this, this current school year. We do have some extra funds that we'll be winding down and we'll be using the remainder, 88,756, for next fiscal year. We did get a cut. We had planned for 25,000. We got informed this year that it was going, is coming down to 25,000, to 15,000, and so we're only planning for 15,000 for next year. And so, we're only planning for $15,000 for next year. This is our Title I account, which is predominantly based on low-income students, and so, that population of students has decreased, and so, we're getting less and less funding there. And then, our Circuit Breaker, we're estimating roughly the same amount of money coming in, so there's a slight increase there that we are expecting to use. There'll be some variability depending on final spending by the end of this year, but those are accounts that Circuit Breaker, there's an overlap period that you can use those funds, and Title I, there's a slight overlap as well. And COVID, I believe, we're available to spend up through FY '24. So, you know, if we don't spend all $88,000 next year, you know, there'll be some that we can carry forward into the following fiscal year. So, that increase is approximately 7%. We do have variables in the hopper that we're in the process of working through now. We're in teachers' contract negotiations. We also have a new paraprofessional contract that we're negotiating, a-
Didn't we just do a paraprof contact?
Did, it was only one year, so we're doing the successor agreement this year. Obviously, the federal funding changes. We're still waiting to see and hear if the federal government is going to change educational funding. We don't, there's really nothing out there yet on what's happening there. Chapter 70, when I put this together, we didn't even have the governor's budget yet. That looks relatively flat as far as what Hadfield will be receiving, so there's not a major increase there for things. Obviously, we talked about school choice numbers. And then, lastly, food service. This year, we are, have an extraordinary gift, not only a great director that we hired in August, but also that it's been paid for through the federal government. Right now, there is a bill in Massachusetts to pay for, at least for another year, for all students. This is still being discussed, we're told, at the federal government level as well. So, I didn't, I budgeted for it as though it was going to be free, so that's going to be, you know, something we'll have to take a look at if we hear, again, before town meeting, just how we're going to respond to that. But it would certainly, because we're going to be in the black this year, I think, for the first time in a number of years. So, not by much, but by a small amount. So, I'm very hopeful that we will be that way as well going forward. And then, just lastly, as you can see, in the entirety of the budget, the town would have an ask of $455,343 of new funds. Again, this is because of those changes in those federal funds, COVID funds, and school choice funds, that we are not going to have as much of as anymore.
What about Volk Ed transportation, that line? Where do you see that?
So, right now, I think we have about 16 applications, and I think right now, we have 24. But, so, there might be a slight reduction, but not by much, because it's still by miles covered. So, and I think they only do one bus now, as it is, so.
Right.
And with all the senior, there must have been kids in the senior class that went, so that they would come off of that.
Correct. Although, yeah, they're probably driving themselves now, but, yeah.
Well, but I think you still have to pay for them.
Yeah, they're still part of the calculation when they do the route. Yeah, everybody's got to be planned for.
Right.
Michael, so, I know you mentioned the COVID funds, but, so, my question is this, are those the, I don't know if you're supposed to say S or S-S-E-R?
S.
Those funds, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, yes, they are.
Okay, so, for fiscal year 2022, which we're in, obviously, it looks like there was $355,000 total for the schools. Is that what you're referring to, that will be carried over to next year, or has all that been spent, or?
Nope, there was a total of a budget of $165,000 for this year for FY '22, and we'll be budgeting $88,000, so those combined is the, close to the 350.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just showing you, we're two different releases according, I show one for $226,990, $226,000, and one for $107,000, so that's 355, and then the IDEA funds.
Right.
So, I'm just wondering if the numbers aren't jiving, or what have you. This is from our accountant.
Right, so, with all the-
I just want to make sure that there's still money there, we're aware of it, and that can be used towards the budget. That's really where I'm going with that.
Is some of those funds spent the previous budget year?
Yes, so there is money that was spent in FY '21, if that's our, so FY '21, FY '22, and FY '23. So, we can, we could spend it over that entire plan.
Okay, that's fine. My interpretation is these funds were for fiscal year 2022, so you wouldn't have spent any of them in 2021, I don't think, right? If you didn't get them until this year. Or could, I don't know, maybe you knew it was coming.
We, no, but we wouldn't have been able to, yeah.
Yeah, so, I'm not here, I am not here, by the way, to bust anybody's chops. I hope you aren't getting, you know, been sitting where you guys are for a long time, but been sitting here, too. So, I just want to make sure, from a numbers perspective, because we're asking the town for an additional $455,000 on top of the 5.2 million that the town already paid, so bringing it, so, if there's another hundred grand here, or 50 grand there, it's just going to start bringing it down, you know? So, these are E-S-S-E-R three.
Right.
Maybe the three means something versus, you know, the third installment or something?
His third year, right.
But I'm showing two different things. One was $226,000, and one was $107,000. So, that's $333,000, which I'm not sure all that's accounted for on your thing. So, maybe that's just something that can be looked at when you get back to your thing.
What were those spent on?
Everything from staff positions that we had, we had a, the teacher position that we added, we're doing a little bit of that one, speech pathologist assistant that we had to add due to services, different kinds of equipment that we needed this school year, nursing services.
Those were COVID-related funds, right?
They're COVID-related, but-
Like a recovery-related fund?
Right, yeah.
Like a grant? Yeah, those are always tough, because you use them, you fill positions, and then the grant expires, or, you know, it's-
Yeah.
They're COVID-related, but they can be used on instruction.
They can be used for anything.
But then they run off.
But they still, it's still a finite, you know, finite amount.
There were special education costs that were associated to that, yes.
I'm not asking how you, you know, that's fine. I just want to make sure from a bottom-line number that they line up, and maybe there's some extra funds that can be used towards the budget, or some of the items that are in the budget, you know?
Yeah, as we get closer to approving a budget, I will scrub all of our grants, because, again, you know, we want to make sure that we've got everything encumbered that we absolutely need for FY '22. And then, whatever we think is going to be over, we can make adjustments to revenue projections.
And the only thing I'm trying to grasp in my head that's been bugging me is, your union, you're going to be doing another union contract, right? And under instruction, you've gone up like $400,000, and then you haven't negotiated another contract, so, I mean, there's $400,000, and then there's going to be even more money, right?
So-
How, what is, what is instruction, basically? Is that all the teaching?
It's all the teaching of positions, all the support staff, all the books, all the materials needed, so, I mean, that's the crux of the entire school system. But to, more to your point specifically, so, we have, in, you know, meeting with the negotiation committee, and the budget subcommittee, and the entire school committee, we have made goals for our negotiations, and we have funded those goals.
Okay, so they're in there.
That's a big increase.
Yep.
Well, we said it earlier on with the last, everything's a big increase.
Everything's a big increase.
That's what we see across the board. That's going to be the challenge of this year's budget.
Yeah.
You know, and trying to, and I guess the challenging part, you know, for the school, I mean, this is a level services budget, and so, if we find we can't fund all of this, then we kind of need to know, you know, what further, you know, what, you know, if you had the, you know, and I don't want, I don't think we need an answer now, but, you know, as it gets a little closer to knowing what some of those grants, anything that you can figure out that will reduce that $455,000 would be, it would be good to know. Yeah, because it's, you know, we're, generally, we're talking $300,000 between two and a half, and maybe some new growth numbers, but, you know, above that, you know.
That's our capacity.
That's our capacity, yeah.
I mean, all three budgets presented tonight asked for a little more over it.
We've blown right through it.
You know, too significantly.
Well, that's our, that's our capacity, though.
But that doesn't mean that's the end.
No, right.
I mean, we don't, we don't have a chapter 70 money number yet.
No, there's a lot of numbers missing, but these are all projections at this point. This whole budget is a projection. It's all based on projections.
But we have to get it started. Yeah, I know in the past, and maybe you've done this behind the scenes, you don't have to answer the question, so I know that in the past, we've gotten the, here's the level service budget, here's the level funding budget, and if you went this route, this is what you'd lose. So, I don't know if you've got that behind the scenes, but that might be something, or-
Different run distances of that.
Yeah, okay, you know what I mean? You know, we don't want to go there. This committee, no matter who's sitting on it, this committee, no matter who's sitting on it, are always very supportive of schools, as is our community.
That's true.
But we already do contribute more than the net school spending requirement that the town has to. We're already above that as a community, and so, I think we just collectively have to make sure, as we're presenting budgets to the town ultimately, that they know that every rock has been turned over, and we've looked under the mattress, and this is, this is what it is.
This is what it is, yeah.
And then, town meeting is going to decide.
And you deserve that.
Yep.
And it's this way every year.
And here, right.
To be quite honest, this is nothing new. This is something we go through all the time.
It's always grim.
You know, Marlene and I-
Oh, it's been worse, Daryl.
We've been doing this a long, we've been doing this a long time, where we've come up with enough, we feel pretty good, and all of a sudden, we put the first run of the budget together, and it's like, oh, wow.
Didn't see that coming.
What are we going to do now? But, you know, there's always light.
It's gone the other way, too.
Yep.
There's been numerous years recently particularly, where we've had money.
Right.
You know, where things have, for whatever reason, have fallen into place.
They do fall into place sometimes, but these are some big numbers. We talked about some big numbers tonight.
Right, but I don't want to set up a thing where we're saying, oh, yeah, there's $500,000 worth of new spending already in the first three budgets, or a little more than that, and we know already we only have $300,000 to cover.
Yeah, we don't really know.
We're not there yet.
No, we're not there yet. Yeah, there's a lot of money.
But realistically, we, you know.
I, you know, you go back to last year, we, there was a lot, I was amazed what we were able to fund last year.
We did, yeah.
I don't, you know, and so, so, there's always hope, and we'll find it, and we'll turn those stones over, and-
Well, there's a lot of work between now and then, but it's a good team, and-
Yeah, so, we'll be meeting, what, do we have another two or three meetings where we're meeting with departments?
Departments, yes.
And then, once we're done with that, we'll start meeting to try to put some budget, you know, to try to finalize some things, and you guys will certainly be very much a part of that, since you're such a big part.
And we get more and more information as the days and weeks go on that make it-
Yeah, yeah, it's all good.
Year after year.
Yeah.
Only they were unlimited money for all of the schools across the community, 351.
Well, it was a thorough presentation, thoughtful presentation, appreciated.
I don't know if you have any questions? I'm good.
I'm good.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Thanks. Okay, so, we're done until two weeks.
Yep.
Two weeks.
Great.
Do we have a select board meeting next week?
We do not.
We don't.
These are school numbers that you asked for in your meeting.
Oh, thank you.
Michael, I'll reach out to you tomorrow regarding vocational tuition and transportation budgets.
Thank you.
I know the deadline is usually, it's April 1st.
Yes.
Yeah, and that number could change, but usually, we get a preliminary number anyway for-
Sure, yeah. Roger cut them all on.
All right, thanks.
Thank you so much, Michael.
Thanks, Michael.
Happy school vacation week.
That's right.
We're almost there.
Are we done?
Almost there.
From your stuff?
Yeah.
Done, we're still on, so I can-
Let me just, yeah.
Okay, you're entertaining them.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that clear?
Did Ed second?